What's going on beautiful people? Welcome to a special episode of the 817 Podcast. This is a show about the lovely city of Fort Worth, Texas. Every Monday, we do an episode discussing the city's top stories from news, politics, trends and business. Today, we have a unique opportunity to host all the candidates for District 11 in one episode to talk about their campaigns, priorities, goals for the city. Please remember, early voting starts April 24th and ends May 2nd, and Election Day is May 6th.
With us today, we have Rick Herring, Tara Maldonado Wilson, Jeanette Martinez, Christopher Johnson, and Ricardo Avicia. Let's start this district candidate panel by asking each candidate, what is their Fort Worth story? And how has it prepared them to run for District 11? Each candidate will get two minutes. So Ricardo, let's start with you. What is your Fort Worth story and why has it prepared you to lead District 11?
Okay. Good morning, everyone. My name is Ricardo Avicia, and I'm a first generation American. I'm a son of migrant parents. I'm also a United States Marine Corps veteran. And I'm a statistic. I was also a teenage parent. By the time I was 19, I had three kids. And so I completely understand and can relate to many of the experiences of the people of District 11, a 100% working class community. And that's why I believe that I am the best candidate for the position. I was a youth football coach as well as baseball and a mentor to many of our youth. Once I got out of the Marine Corps, I decided to continue my service in the community. I've had the opportunities. I also lost my job during the recession of 2008, 2009, which City of Fort Worth was actually one of the two cities that actually progressed during that timeframe. Make a long story short, I'm a lifelong member of the community. I live on the same street that I grew up on, and I am the right candidate for the working class community of District 11. Thank you, sir.
Jeanette, what's your Fort Worth story?
Hi, good morning, everybody. Jeanette Martinez, I am, I was born and raised here in Fort Worth. I'm a daughter of Mexican immigrants, so first generation. Also, first generation college student. I'm a product of Fort Worth ISD, graduated from Pasco High School. And I continued my higher ed here locally at TCC and then later transferring to Texas Wesleyan. Most recently, I earned my master's in public administration. I have been a part of local government for the past 10 years, working under Commissioner Roy Charles Brooks, Tarrant County Precinct One, as his executive administrator. So, you know, I've been working in the community, but I've also volunteered throughout my life. I've been a part of several nonprofits in executive positions and also just a community volunteer. I have grown up here. I've, I've seen the struggles, you know, have to work through the processes of trying to get into school. You know, I didn't realize, not that it's easy, but you know, how easy it was just taking that first step and actually getting it done. I thought that me joining the military was going to be the way for me to pay for school. So I, I didn't enlist the Marines. I got medical discharge for a thyroid condition. But you know, then once I got started, you know, it got the ball rolling. So you know, I got my degree, I started working. I started seeing the importance of public service and just investing in my community that way. And so that's, that's what I want to give back to this new district to see it flourish and ultimately to see a better Fort Worth.
Christopher, go ahead.
First of all, I would like to say hello to everyone. Thank you guys with the 817 Podcast and to know that you're in District 11, that means a lot. I, my bio is, I'm originally from Fort Worth. I'm a homeowner, I'm a landowner, and I'm a neighborhood president. And I've been active in the community for probably over, over a decade, advocating for the community and the neighbors, bringing economic development to our area, supporting small businesses, and also I'm a professional entrepreneur, business owner for 30 years. I employed people and we had more employees to go out and open up their own salon, which it just kept enriching the community. And also I have done real estate investing with duplexes. Also with my business background, I've come in contact with different organizations. I sit on two boards with the city, dealing with the city of Fort Worth. Also, there's a, with the park and recreation, they're redoing Sycamore Park. So I'm involving the community and enriching our community. So between my bio and being a professional entrepreneur and community advocate, it takes a lot to be able to work with the citizens, find out what their needs are and keep the money within our community. District 11 is a great opportunity. Excuse me if I hear my two dogs, they got two Walmart owners. Hey guys, I need y'all to be quiet, please. So I'm ready to, to take on all of the challenges and work with the community. Again, being a vice president of my neighborhood association, working with people is not anything new to me. So being, if I'm elected, it will give me the ability to enrich our community. So I'm excited about that as well.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Herring, go ahead.
Okay. Good morning. Thank you all for having me. I appreciate the opportunity. Longtime 817 Podcast listener, so this is fun. I'm, I'm excited about being on. My Fort Worth story, I was born and raised in Fort Worth. Grew up in a working class family in Riverside. I've lived here my whole life and I still live in the Riverside area today. Went through Fort Worth Public Schools. I graduated from Texas Wesleyan in 1989. And I moved away after graduating. I moved away for two years. I wanted to see some different parts of the country and experience some different things. But I always knew I was coming back home to make my life in Fort Worth. But when I came back after those two years, I saw Fort Worth and particularly my community Riverside with a new set of eyes, I guess you would say, after being gone. And I could see in my own neighborhood that there had been sort of a significant turn down in the neighborhood and it was on a downward trajectory, trajectory. And at that time, I lived in the Oakhurst neighborhood when I moved back here. And I got involved with the Oakhurst Neighborhood Association, which at that time was one of the few neighborhood associations in Fort Worth. Now we have them everywhere, all over the city, thank goodness. But back then, there weren't that many. But I got involved with the Oakhurst Neighborhood Association. I ultimately became the president of that group. And we started working on things in the neighborhood. We wanted just basic things, code compliance. We wanted streets on bond projects. We wanted police services. We wanted things that we were not getting and had not been getting for a long time. And me and a few others, but we knew we couldn't do that in a vacuum. So we went out and we started seven other neighborhood associations in our area. Because as I said, there weren't that many, but we started seven new ones around us. And we all came together and formed the Riverside Alliance, which was a coalition of all those neighborhood associations. So we could work together, band together for the betterment of our community. And we were the first neighborhood alliance in Fort Worth. We pioneered that concept. Now you have them everywhere. You have Neighborhoods of East Fort Worth. You've got the West Side Alliance, the Cultural District Alliance, North Fort Worth Alliance, whatever. But we were the first ones and we made it work and we made it successful and it's still going today. I, because of my involvement with neighborhoods, I have a lengthy community service resume, zoning commission, plan commission, Historic Cultural Landmarks Commission, which I serve on now. I have a passion for protecting neighborhoods. I have a passion for forging the new District 11 because it is a district that is made up of working class and middle class neighborhoods that I know very well because that's what I've lived. And I'm ready to get started working on day one. I have the background that will allow me to do that. I've worked with City Hall for 30 plus years and I know how to get things done and I'm ready to start working. I've got a long list for day one.
All right, Tara, finish us off.
All right. Hey, everyone. I'm happy to be back. I've been on the show before. Let's see if I can get this into two minutes here. All right. So I, originally from Waco, Texas. I'm an ER trauma nurse. It's what pays my bills. I have three kids. I am proud to say that my oldest daughter will be graduating from college in May with her first degree debt free. Hello. And so I moved to Fort Worth in 2017, just basically leaving my hometown of Waco, Texas and deciding that I wanted to put new roots down and raise my kids somewhere. And I found Fort Worth through my travel nursing and ended up coming here. And so I had put my head down at that point in my life. I'd been doing a lot of activism work in Dallas. And so really had kind of really flexed that muscle and understanding things that were going on and impacting Black and Brown people in Texas in this country. And so I was on a national mindset of activism work. And so then in 2019, when Ataciana Jefferson was shot in her house, and I went down to my very first city council meeting to talk about what I thought about that incident, I found myself locked out. I was locked out with a lot of other people, really confused by that. It sent me down this path to understand that it really didn't take a whole lot to serve on city council, that we actually didn't have that many smart people up there actually doing or making decisions that, you know, were being created that actually cared about people on the neighborhood level, like Rick just said, or in our communities, especially in Black and Brown communities in Fort Worth. So going down that rabbit hole, asking for budget town hall meeting from then Carrie Moon and him telling us no, nobody ever comes, even though the meeting was virtual. It was really clear to me that he was tone deaf and there are still a few others up there that are still tone deaf, that I needed to run against him. I had no political background. Being Hispanic myself, I am third generation. My grandmother was the first generation. She was a migrant farm worker with her family and her immigrant parents. You know, I was lucky to be raised by her. You know, my mother really was kind of in and out of my life. I didn't have a father figure. You know, I helped raise my younger brother and sister who now are also in the metroplex. And my, actually my sister lives with me now. And so I decided to run against Carrie Moon and I really just kind of shoestring together a campaign. And on a $9,000 budget in 2021, we came less than 70 votes of forcing him into a runoff, a two-term incumbent. And so I knew that I had like kind of struck lightning there and that I had really resonated with a lot of people in Fort Worth. But I knew that I still had work to do. So I put my head down. I decided I need to kind of figure out how Fort Worth really works. Who are the power players? Let's go as a mentality of the city. What were the things that we did well? Okay. And so then I put my head down. I did leadership for worth leadership ISD. I did a national leadership group on, you know, community stuff. And through the pandemic, I worked on the Tarrant County Community Bell Fund. I joined the Board of LGBTQ Cays. I became a bilingual election judge. I'm a Democratic precinct chair. Have helped multiple candidates run for office, give them the tools and the things that they need to know to help them run successfully, especially in this last county race too, a lot of those candidates I helped. Whoever has asked me for help, I've given it to them. And in every part of this district, in every single area, I have been an advocate and I have stood up for them on issues that affected them. And so they know me on the ground and they know me being there in their community. So that's why I'm here and that's how I got, ended up in this race, advocating on a community after Mattie Parker voted against the community oversight board. So I decided to jump into the race and represent this more fully. So that's me in a nutshell from my Fort Worth story.
Awesome. Thanks, everyone. So let's talk about, let's talk about District 11 because this is a new district. For the first time since 1924, Fort Worth has added districts to city council. And we're a pretty funky looking district when you look at it on a map. So since District 11 has been put in place, what have you learned about its makeup and what brings us together? And then also share what you think makes us unique and how you can advocate for not only the neighborhood that you live in and are used to, but the people in our sort of roundabout district that exists now. And we'll, we'll start with Jeanette this time.
Okay, great. Well, you know, it's, it's a very vibrant and very diverse district. It, you know, it spans a big part of our East Fort Worth, Southeast and then South Fort Worth too. And so I'm in Rosemont. I, I was born Eastside, East Berry Riverside, in Parkland Compass that is no longer there. And then for the other major part of my life, it's near Southside and South Hempil Heights and then now Rosemont. But you know, I'm very familiar with the different areas. I have worked and lived in both, on both sides. We have these really great historic areas, Oakhurst, Riverside, Eastern Hills, Mattoe, Rosemont. They all have a wonderful character and those need to be nurtured and protected. We have these really great thoroughfares like Race Street. I was just on Race Street yesterday. They had this really cool vendor pop up. Yeah. And also Mindful Market had another one at the campus of Texas Wesleyan. So it's a lot of really great things that are happening. I feel like with, it is diverse, but I feel like since we're all very different, we can all come to a mutual agreement that every neighborhood, it's gonna, is gonna have its different needs and wants and, and work with each neighborhood to, you know, get smart development and not anything that, that they wouldn't want to see. And you know, we want economic development, but we also want to work with each neighborhood to make sure that all stakeholders are brought to the table and ensure that everybody has enough sufficient communication to make projects successful. If they do come to fruition, if not, then they wouldn't. But you know, I, I feel like I'm at an advantage. I am bilingual. I, like I said, I grew up here and I've worked in, on both sides. And so I feel like that would help me be able to communicate and better to other groups that may, may feel like they have not been heard or underserved in the past. So that, that's my two cents on that.
Thank you. All right. Christopher, same question.
District 11, it's quite unique and it's very diverse. Me being a business owner of 30 years, I had a very diverse employees. It was composed of mostly Hispanic, Black and White. That was the beginning and I didn't know a year, decades later, that my experience would bring that into the community. I remember going to Seminary South before Slagran Plaza. So I know that area. Also, East Lancaster, my very first job was at a pharmaceutical company. And I would call off the name, but I would really be dating myself. But my first job was on East Lancaster at 17. I remember Stripling and Cox before they combined. You had Money's Department Store. So District 11 is going to need a complete overhaul. I'm a visionary. It's going to take somebody with a vision to bring it up to where it should have already been. But because it was ignored for so many years, it's going to take the right leader to be able to make it shine again. It's a diamond in the rough. So my thing is to work with small to mid-sized business owners because the big box stores, they don't need any help. Everybody knows what a Target or Walmart is. But does anyone know who Michael with his food truck is? Or Jose? No one knows those people because they're not on the map. I recognize and love working with small businesses. When we had the 2007 and eight financial meltdown by GM and Ford and different ones was asking for bailout money, guess who kept the economy running? It was the small business owners. So I have a heart and passion, being a small business owner. A lot of times we get resources out of our pockets. So again, I am the right leader that can communicate and find out what each neighborhood needs. What Riverside needs, Polytechnic might not need. Our needs are so different, so you need to go to each community and find out what that community needs. Cause I can't speak for each community, but I can work with the people.
Rick, go ahead.
District 11 is a strangely shaped and gerrymandered district, to say the least. The city council did not do us any favors by creating this far flung and geographically dispersed district. It, I know all the neighborhoods of the district. And one, one strength that this district will have is that almost without exception, the neighborhoods in this district are working and middle class. We all have that in common. You know, there's not a lot of affluent areas and there's not a lot of really low income areas as well. It's kind of in the middle and it's these middle sort of marginalized neighborhoods that City Hall consistently overlooks, always has, always will, until we stand up and fight for ourselves. And that's what we've got to do. And I do think, however, the commonality of those neighborhoods will be one of the strengths of District 11. It's going to take someone with a vision. We're creating a new thing we've never had in Fort Worth. This is a brand new district. It's going to have to be, there's going to have to be some innovative ideas and undertakings to forge this district and to give it a personality, a distinctive personality. And I have some ideas to do that, that I will start working on as soon as I'm elected. But it's going to be a challenge to bring all these neighborhoods together. But again, I've spent time in all of them. Obviously I grew up in the Riverside, Oakhurst area. I know East Fort Worth very well. Lancaster was our go-to place for shopping, for eating, for everything. I'd like to see that again. I know Polly pretty good because of going to Texas Wesleyan and having relatives that lived there for many years. Southeast, the southeast part of the district, I used to very frequently go to a skating rink on Miller Avenue. I know that area. I don't know if I would attempt to go on roller skates today. But you know, and, and the South Fort Worth neighborhoods, Rosemont, Worth Heights, those areas, I know them. I've spent a lot of time over there. LeGrand Plaza, to me, it, someone has said that you can tell how long someone has lived in Fort Worth by how they refer to that shopping center, either Seminary South or Town Center, LeGrand Plaza today. But it is a vibrant economic engine for that part of the city. It's, it's fabulous and we need to take advantage of that and build upon that. But it's going to be challenging to forge this district into one, just because of the geographic dispersity. But as I said earlier, I think that we have a lot of commonality with our, the way our neighborhoods are. They're primarily working and middle class neighborhoods. And that's what I know. That's what I've lived.
Thanks. All right, Tara, go ahead.
Woo. Um, yeah. So let's get down to the brass taxes of this. I mean, yeah, this, this district does look weird and funny, but because we had to go out of our way to carve a minority opportunity district to bring real representation to city council so that it actually reflects the demographics that we have now in the city. It's 38% Hispanic. We've only ever had one Hispanic representative on city council. And so that's why the map was drawn that way. Yeah, it's not cute. That's not nice. It's weird to look at. And trying to describe the boundary lines are really hard, but it's important that we bring that context into this conversation. I also believe that for the most part, as we've brought out, that a lot of these neighborhoods are historical with this rich vibrant history that have continued to be underserved, like not, not invested in and pretty much ignored and shut out of decision-making in Fort Worth. Our tax base has contributed to this massive growth and all, massive growth and all this shiny stuff that Fort Worth likes to, you know, tout itself a B and so this, that and the other. But really, when at the end of the day, it really almost ignores a lot of people in the city that actually make it Fort Worth. So there are a lot of projects coming that are going on in District 11. In the old District Four, which is Riverside, like we have been advocating to get all of Riverside to look the same, but it was hard because we had a council person that didn't invest in that part of Riverside. So you can literally go down Race Street and see where nine, District Nine had been revitalized and District Eight had been invested in and oh, there's District Four. It just falls off. It just looks contrastingly different, you know? That's why I ran to represent all the areas within the loop for District Four because we were, that was the kind of shaft we were getting. And so then if you keep going on down the road, you got the 820 door, 820 corridor expansion coming to the southeast part. You've got this, the comprehensive plan going on right now that's trying to grow this industrial hub, that's trying to continue polluting Echo Heights, a neighborhood in Village Creek down there. They keep being pushed out of the conversation. They're getting these unexplained illnesses and stuff that the city is, is ignoring. And quite frankly, it's, it's really, it's really actually embarrassing to me that these people have been having to fight so hard just to say, I want to live in a healthy neighborhood. Again, we have a city that can mine Bitcoin, but can't take care of its people. It's an 80% district of color. It's pretty much 90% working class. 20% of the district doesn't have working internet in their home. They use their phone to access that stuff. And so these are all real problems. We have great things going on, but we also have big projects going on along with the Polly North Main Street America project with Southeast Fort Worth. And the Hempil corridor that we have to keep fighting, you know, the difference between revitalization and gentrification. And then making sure that we're getting jobs and getting stuff back to the Lancaster corridor and the Eastside and the vibrant city that it used to have and respecting all of our neighborhoods and giving us our dignity back.
All right, Ricardo, finish us off on this one.
Now I wanted to say thank you all for having me on the show and thank you to the listeners as well. Yeah, I'd like to piggyback on what Ms. Tara stated and as well as Mr. Rick has stated and Mr. Johnson. Well, I took, everybody, now the district has been gerrymandered. Our precincts, our voting precincts were cracked on the south side. Precinct 4233, 4155 and 4107 were cracked. Three precincts in the Polly neighborhood area were also cracked, which was a violation of the Voting Rights Act. And so yes, we have issues with this particular map. And although we are in diverse parts of the city with myself being in South Fort Worth and living right off of Hempil, I'm one of the founders of Hempil No Sevente, which is an organization composed of business owners and, and residents that fought to fight a rezoning of 313 acres in South Fort Worth. One of the largest in Fort Worth history, unprecedented amount of acreage under the moniker of near Southside. We are not like near Southside. We are Southside. And so therefore to have a moniker of such, we brought upon us was a disrespect. And so because of lack of communication and, and not sending information in both, in multiple languages, then yes, we had a problem. So we stood up as a community and, and were able to battle that off of our plate. But like Ms. Tara stated, on the comprehensive plan, the city has now changed the comprehensive plan to work against us, right? So they, they went to cater to new business and talk about we needing to bring tax revenue to the city. But District 11 has a big majority of it in a neighborhood empowerment zone, which means that these big corporations have come over here and get tax abatements and no one's talking about, which means that they don't have to, have to submit affordable housing packages because they don't need subsidies from the federal government or states. So, and, and we have one of the highest unemployment rates in the whole city. Being in District 11, no one's talking about, we do have similarities. Where are you talking about? We don't have similarities. We all need sidewalks and wheelchair ramps and, and, and better lighting. What are you talking about? We don't have similarities. We do have similarities. And we are an underserved and malrepresented community. And so therefore I'm going to bring the fight to City of Fort Worth and make sure that our community, working class community is better served because we are $20,000 under the Fort Worth average medium income. That's why I'm here to represent the working class of City of Fort Worth. Thank you very much.
So kind of picking up on a lot of that, what problem or challenge most concerns you about the city of Fort Worth and District 11 specifically? Start with Christopher this time.
It's been stated by the past mayor, and I believe the story was in the Star Telegram, that the entire east part of Fort Worth, which covers a vast majority of District 11, when leadership knew that we were underserved and they continue not to bring economic development, it's, it's a tragedy. And we, the residents that live here are the ones that suffer from that. Often, if I want something, it's depending on what it is. Sometimes I have to drive outside of District 11, or I have to go to Hewland or Kent Bluestein area. And that shouldn't be because I want to keep the tax dollars within I zip code. Now, when possible, I do promote a lot of the local vendors that are in 11. But again, all the amenities that we need, we shouldn't have to drive so many miles outside of that. So my whole thing is enriching economic development and working with the residents and finding out what they would like to bring. And that's what I've been, a big portion of what I've been doing is talking to the community. Cause as a candidate, I can tell you all day and night what I would like to see, but also I've been asking the youth. They are the future. What would you like to see in our community? I was talking with a 15-year-old. I said, what does she do? She says, well, when her downtime, she gets in the car and drives around. The city for one, except for one, they closed down all of the city pools. So if you're 14 to 15, you really don't have that much to do. So we need to bring resources in so the, the youth can have things to do where, where they're not just bored or possibly can get in trouble, run around with the wrong crowd. So I'm about revitalizing the youth and economic development.
Awesome. Rick, go ahead.
Well, I'll start with the big ticket item, the City of Fort Worth. We have out of control growth outside of the loop that has got to be managed better than it has been. We can't sustain thousands and thousands of rooftops going up every month or every, you know, whatever. Uh, something's gotta be done about that. So for me, a city, that's a citywide issue that is paramount. Uh, to control that in some way and plan better for the future. District eleven specifically, again, we are a working class, middle-class district. We've got to see some economic development. Y'all talked about this last week on your podcast, that Star Telegram article about density driving development. That's BS. East Fort Worth is as dense as West Fort Worth. And so I, I don't buy that. That's disingenuous from developers. What they're talking about is income levels. We've got to build on what we have. We've got to uh, we've got to advocate for Gateway Park, our open space areas to draw people to our area. You also mentioned something that I just loved. I thought it was brilliant. This was a few weeks ago. Building some kind of bridge to connect Gateway Park to Tandy Hills Park. And I'm not sure which one of you, EJ or Jimmy, said that, but uh, literally, seriously, that was brilliant. And it needs to be looked into and I will do that day one. And there's a lot of, you know, red tape with text on and everything else about the freeway. But if it's feasible, I'll say, let's do it. We've got to strengthen uh, uh, East Lancaster. It has to come back. There's lots of great plans for it, but there's nobody in charge of making it happen. Nope, there's not been one advocate that's driving that. It's all over the place. And we've got to focus on that and make good things happen there. We've got to have an urban village on the east side of Oakland Corners. Oakland and Lancaster was designated years ago as an urban village and the city hadn't done a dang thing to make it happen. And they need to, we need to. We're gonna have to force it to happen. I mentioned La Grande Plaza. Gosh, that is such a vibrant uh, economic engine for that part of Fort Worth. We need to build on that strength and expand it. Um, you know, those are my goals for District eleven, to strengthen what we have within. Because I guarantee you guys, no one from outside of District eleven gives a hoot about District eleven. And they're not gonna do anything to uh, help us. We have to demand and make that change happen ourselves.
Jeanette, go ahead.
Um, I really need, I really feel like we need to improve communications between our residents, our neighborhood associations and our city government, city uh, representatives and staff. Uh, it's, cause when communication breaks down, you know, it builds distrust and it creates barriers to progress. Um, so you know, and when it comes like to these economic developments that people really want to see. Um, you really need to work together with all the stakeholders to make those successful. But also to ensure that communication stays in place once it's already done. Um, uh, Rick touched on the uh, developments uh, on the outskirts of the city. There's, there's some big developments coming. And with that, it worries me that our response time to our first responder, our police and firefighters. It's gonna be stretched even more. So we need to bring in uh, more firefighters, more policemen. Um, just most recently, um, my son was assaulted coming off the bus. Um, uh, a fellow student had um, uh, knocked him out and continued to hit him while he was unconscious. Luckily, there was a uh, a neighbor who intervened and was able to put a stop to it. Um, and he was able to get home. Uh, he was, he, he did probably suffer a concussion. But you know, we called the police as soon as that happened. And um, although it wasn't an emergency, it did take about two hours for them to get out here, you know? And so um, you know, I, I observed him, you know, I, I, I was pretty sure he was okay. We did take him to the hospital or yeah, the clinic the next day. But you know, that, that response time, um, I feel like should have been shorter. Um, but also I would love to have um, a, something in Fort Worth that could bring, especially in District eleven, that could bring um, our whole city get together, you know, Gateway Park, there used to be talks of having an amphitheater there. You know, bringing that hopefully to fruition one day. Or maybe even a pool, you know, uh, Christopher touched on something for the youth. It'd be great if we could have a pool at Gateway Park. But those are just some of the things that um, I feel like are my priorities.
Ricardo, we'll go to you next.
Yes, sir. The lack of communication is what I believe is one of the major uh, issues. Uh, the City of Fort Worth understands that uh, we are disenfranchised uh, community. And uh, they're just gonna check off the boxes. They're not gonna do any proactiveness or uh, take any initiative to make sure that every community member, resident and business owner is aware of any development or changes that might be coming to our communities. And so, and I'm just bringing the information, but bringing anything in multiple languages, which is also one of the reasons why we stood up as a community with Hemp Hill No Sevente is because the city was wanting to, again, rezone our community and only send uh, uh, the information in English. When we are a seventy percent Hispanic uh, community, so that, that was an issue. Um, we spoke about economic development, you know, economic development is a tricky, it's a tricky word. You know, it's a slippery slide when we use that word because as I stated before, you know, the City of Fort Worth was one of the only cities that, in fact, it was one of two cities who actually progressed during the two thousand eight uh, recession. Uh, only behind Charlotte, North Carolina, we actually progressed. And uh, as Mr. Harry still is, La Grande Plaza was, is very vibrant. I passed by there every day because that's during the time I was unemployed. And uh, I mean, it was, it was packed every weekend. I mean, my cousin would ask ourselves, what recession? What are they talking about on the news of a recession? There was no recession in Fort Worth. And we knew it because we, we lived down the street from uh, La Grande Plaza and we, we also shop and spend our money there. Um, as a matter of fact, my, one of my, my first job was at the movie theaters there at uh, the Town Center Mall. And then I started to work at uh, on Hemp Hill Street at Thomas Bumper to Bumper, um, local mom and pops uh, uh, auto supply store. So we have been a commi, a community as just as to the rest of District eleven, who has uh, thankfully and blessedly uh, sustained ourselves. Um, so having information dissemination is very important. And yes, we do need pools. As a matter of fact, instead of a affordable housing project that they wanted to bring affordable housing that they wanted to bring to uh, South Fort Worth of a Hemp Hill and Bedison, I suggested that we bring a pool there instead. Uh, because we got kids coming across the freeway from Carter Park and uh, Rosemont Hubbard Heights traveling to Forest Hill, I mean, excuse me, Forest Park uh, pool on, on their bikes and walking. So yes, uh, information dissemination. Thank you so much.
Tara, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, for me, my biggest concern is the east side being sold out. Like again, we've already got all these projects that are in the work. They're eyeing it. They've created these entities. We have people in charge who are really trying to do the right thing, you know? And we, I want to make sure that they have someone at City Hall that's actually supporting them, you know? Polly has this North, Main Street North America project coming, but residents who lived in Polly were working on their revitalization plan long ago. I mean, Chris, Christopher Johnson can talk to this back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. They were getting, you know, uh, UTA professors to come on and help them with their plan. They got the professors from Texas Wesleyan to come on with their plan. And of course, now they've gotten the funding uh, to be able to revitalize that corridor through the Main Street North America project and Southeast Fort Worth team coming on. But again, we have to make sure that those residents who started that project are the voices that are centered there. And that the people who live in Polly are actually gonna be the ones that benefit from the project, right? And we have to have a strong leader at City Hall, making sure that they're on the ground backing up those residents. Because that's what they want. Now, we do want economic development in District eleven. All neighborhoods want the, want our sidewalks. We want vibrant neighborhoods. We want to be able to walk. We want to stop having to drive ten minutes, fifteen minutes away to get our groceries. We want to have nice sit-down restaurants, right? We, we do want the investment, but again, it cannot come and it will not, cannot come at the cost of our neighborhoods or our residents. It has to be them that's constantly centered. And so, you know, uh, Ricardo, you know, brought up Hemp Hill No Sevente, you know, I remember when he started that. It was a big deal. It's still a big deal. That Hemp Hill corridor project has been in place now for over twenty years. Though that project goes back to the seventies, right? So now it has slowly started coming down with South Main. Now it's, now it's coming down to his historic south side where we have vibrant Hispanic neighborhoods. We have lived there. People have lived there thirty, forty years, right? They put in those bike lanes that, that aren't really used down there because they're not designing and creating these plans for a context for culture for the people that live in those areas, right? So those kinds of things are things that we need advocate in a loud, strong voice can stand up and cut through the middle and say, hey, we need the investment, but you're gonna respect these people's voices. We talk about La Grande Plaza and the Biblioteca, La Grande Plaza, they took the library from south side. Now we got this digital storefront that they're trying to tell us is a library, but the community is saying, no, it's not. That is not a library. We want books. We want a place where we can go and have more than five computers to sit down and help our students and our families do research and learn and do job applications. And so I'm concerned that now there are entities in the city that see this seat as an open seat to poach for just a position of power. And I don't want a puppet in the seat. And I'm very, very staunch against, against somebody that's coming in here with special interests just to come in and rip the east side from, away from. All of our families are historical. People who have had roots in this area for decades to come, and that's somewhere that I'm firmly gonna stand. Um, and that's the thing that actually concerns me the most is somebody swooping in, saying they care about us and then just selling us out in the end. Like the story always has been in Fort Worth's history.
So a consistent topic uh, from all of you has been development over here. Um, and how we balance that with gentrification and keeping the identities of our neighborhoods. So as a city councillor for District eleven, how will you curate development and support growth without losing what makes each neighborhood special? And we'll start with Rick this time.
Yeah, that's a great question and I have firsthand experience with that. Um, our, in Riverside, we have had the most beautiful bluff in the city. And it was given over to apartments. And I am not a fan of the new style apartments, but the city crammed it down our throat. They rezoned the whole area mixed-use zoning over the objections of many people, including myself. I'm not necessarily against mixed-use zoning, but when City of Fort Worth says mixed-use zoning, they're talking about apartments. They're not talking about true mixed-use. Anyway, so we gave up our bluff for that. And um, what was concerning to many of us is that it abutted uh, single-family neighborhoods, uh, working-class families that had been there for decades. And we were very concerned about the gentrification of that, in that happening in that area. So far it has not, but that's also because of the efforts of many of us to prevent it from happening. And saying, look, we're not just gonna take what you're trying to, you know, spoon-feed us over here or cram down our throats. It's more like it. But I think that is a fine balance. We have to have affordable housing. And many times that comes in the form of apartment complexes. So I'm not against all apartments, but I think they have to be done thoughtfully and carefully. And they can't be concentrated in one area. They need to be dispersed um, so that they don't overwhelm the surrounding areas. And I've worked with a developer here in my neighborhood and also in Meadowbrook who has done very good affordable housing developments that have not overwhelmed the neigh, the neighborhoods and has not led to gentrification. But that is always a concern for our older neighborhoods. I, uh, I think that uh, Meadowbrook especially is very vulnerable to that. My area is as well. Uh, the Hemp Hill corridor, as several other uh, guests on the forum have indicated. Um, it's just something that's gonna take a very fine-tooth comb and you have to look at each on a case-by-case basis. You can't apply the same standards across the board. But uh, obviously it is a concern and one that I would be very uh, particularly involved in.
Tara, go ahead.
You know, the city has this really bad habit of saying, oh, we had meetings. We had two meetings on a Tuesday at six P M. And on Thursday of the same week at seven P M. And those are the two meetings we did because that's the bare minimum threshold that we have to reach, right? But again, we've talked about the fact that this is a working-class community. We have working-class neighborhoods. What about like a weekend morning meeting? What about a later night meeting? What about, you know, uh, you know, having more one-on-one meetings? I mean, I, I love that, you know, our neighborhood associations, we have some very strong neighborhood associations as, as Rick has pointed out in our district. But they're not the end-all, be-all, you know, there, I feel like sometimes they're also a barrier to residents in certain neighborhoods, right? We had the whole coffee folk fiasco in Meadowbrook to be one of them, right? It, it, it was, it was uh, set up, you know, the neighborhood association was saying one thing, but other residents saying, no, we want them in this area that was being rezoned. And the neighborhood association said, no, we found another area over here, but it was outside of Meadowbrook and on the Lancaster corridor. Everybody wanted coffee folk in the place where they are actually trying to get. And of course, in the end, they didn't get it. But again, to me, that's just an example of the fact that we have to go bigger than just that. We have to come out here and really meet people where they are. They're getting off of work at the end of the day. They're too tired to try to navigate this arduous, complicated website that we just can't get right. It is so hard to get information from there. You, you know, they may not be able to make their neighborhood association meeting. And just because they weren't there doesn't mean that they don't care and that they don't want to be part of the conversation. They do. Everyone cares about this issue and these issues. And so again, I think it just takes some vibrant leadership and intentional decision to say like, I literally have them go out here and beat on doors. Right? I have to create a social media spearhead plan that meet, that can hit people where they are. Oh, guess what? Twenty percent of, of, of the, the, this district doesn't have internet for those neighborhoods that that are fall in that area. Guess what? We have to be literally boots on the ground at their door, talking to them and meeting them where they are. Um, and so I think that it's about that. It's about understanding the different ways that uh, you know, keep some of our neighborhoods behind. And the southeast part of this district needs so much love. They have been so neglected. We're really gonna have to pour into them and pull them up with the rest of our Meadowbrook and Riverside's um, that, you know, are still, are pretty vibrant and, and have strong voices, but bringing up with us. Because we are all together in this and we have to be good neighbors and stewards to each other.
All right, Ricardo.
Hush, sir. Thank you. It's a great question. And I, I'd like to piggyback on Ms. Tara Wilson's uh, statements, yes, and, and Rick's as well. Um, let's not forget about the information dissemination that I mentioned earlier. Um, in order for us to adequately have a, a working-class community, um, you know, be revamped or revitalized, we have to get them involved, right? Because they are the people who have sustained these communities for so long. And so to uh, do anything but to be proactive in reaching out to them and meeting them where they are. Uh, last night I was, I was canvassing uh, the neighborhoods until eight o'clock. And uh, you know, people are, are just getting home from work on Saturday afternoons. Um, and, and some of them are working night shifts, uh, because we are a working-class community. So being intentional about reaching out to our community members and informing them adequately so that they can make informed decisions is gonna be key uh, to making our city more vibrant and successful. Uh, because we do want tourism to come to Fort Worth and we do want people to come and spend their dollars here because we do need their tax money. Uh, but again, we can't do it without the uh, consensus of the community. Um, and bringing about development that will be beneficial to the current residents of Fort Worth and uh, District eleven.
Thank you. Uh, Jeanette.
Yes, so um, you know, we, we're gonna need somebody that makes a very, uh, like, like my fellow candidates have said. Uh, concise effort to have a big outreach when these type of developments come to the table. So somebody that is vested in protecting the integrity of our neighborhoods, that is vigilant of, of what's coming up. Um, we are gonna have a lot of um, developments that are, you know, housing developments. But also we need to be vigilant on those uh, developments that are somewhat predatory, you know? Um, those quick loan uh, businesses, those um, pawn shops and game rooms. We don't need to have those centralized in our uh, district and um, you know, we don't need to be the dumping ground for that. So just somebody that, that is, that is out there, that is looking out for um, these type of developments. But working with the community, like, like I've said, and bringing in all stakeholders so that everybody has an input, a, a true input. Not just, you know, a few that, that uh, may be the loudest, but you know, going door-to-door and getting a true number of those that, that would be for or were, would be against.
Awesome. All right, Christopher.
Like uh, Tara, Jeanette, Ricardo, a lot of them have brought up uh, great uh, points. It's gonna take the right leadership and ballots. Uh, right now, Texas Wesleyan, I mean, uh, right now, Polytechnic Heights, it's on the map as the north side. Like Tara mentioned, we were already starting uh, building up in the neighborhood. We just didn't have the financial backing. So I'm going for the underdog. The tax abatement is a really, really big, um. The tax abatement, a lot of times it's been Texas Wesleyan. A lot of the, the big uh, well-known uh, institutions have got the tax abatements. But it was designed for uh, for all. And all is not uh, getting it. One of the things it's gonna take is educating uh, the residents. Uh, like you have Community Engagement Office, which they are in charge of distributing information throughout the community. Uh, and like Tara had said. Uh, and like Tara had said, even me being a vice president of my neighborhood association, there's a lot of people who do not want to join the neighborhood association or don't, or don't know the value. So those people sometimes are left out of the conversation. So I make sure to reach them. Don't turn my nose up if they're not part of a neighbor association because they are residents and they're paying their taxes. Also, um, there's incentives um, for first time home buyers. Cause we love saying uh, affordable housing, but when people have two and three jobs and they cannot afford, they don't qualify for a mortgage, they're left out. So I would like to see more classes uh, and put out so people can know. Once you know better, you do better. Let them know, hey, even though you don't have the funding, we have X enough of HUD programs. Home but first time home buyers. So they can be uh, part of the American dream. And guess what? When they buy a house in the community, that's going to help with uh, the economic development.
Awesome. Well, the next kind of section that I would love to dive into is a little bit more personal convert questions based off of just issues and priorities and just kind of success we've seen among y'all's campaigns now. I do want to go to Rick here on the sense of, I know um, you were involved with your home association at Oakhurst. You're now at Riverside. Based off of what Tara said and, and Christopher around, um, man, home associations can sometimes be the limitation to the, the, the getting things done. What is your overall take of the, the uh, home association dynamic in Fort Worth? Where you often see um, older residents, maybe more conservative residents compared to maybe the new young purchasers that maybe do not see themselves in home associations? Rick, this is to you.
Yeah, great question. I will say from the beginning, I'm a neighborhood guy. I believe firmly in neighborhood associations. I think they're the building blocks of the city and they're the ones that drive things to get done in our underserved and marginalized neighborhoods. However, what you said, EJ, is exactly right. Younger people uh, do not want to go to a meeting once a month and sit there and listen to the guest speaker and do whatever. And you know, many times they don't have time. They're working, they're coming home, they have kids. Um, and that is a real challenge. I can only speak to my experience or what we've tried to do to reach out to uh, a, a more diverse group in the neighborhood, the people that don't necessarily want to be part of the neighborhood association. Because their opinions have as much value as those of us who do go to those meetings uh, and do all of that, as Christopher said. But we've done some outreach things to reach uh, folks in our neighborhoods. We've had kickball games, we've had happy hours, we've had other events that take place out of a meeting type setting to disseminate information and to find out what people are really thinking and what they want for their community. But having said all that, there has to be some level of organization to uh, galvanize those communities and go to city hall, go to your city council person and demand what you need for your neighborhood. So it is a balance between those uh, you know, the concept of the neighborhood association as sort of an established thing. We can't do nowadays, we can't do what we did in the nineties and the early two thousands. We have to reach people by social media. We have to reach them by text. You know, we have to do whatever we can to try to get folks involved. And I, me being a neighborhood guy, I've lived this. The, if people have talked about communications, I didn't hit on that earlier, but the city has tried and they've done a fairly good job of disseminating information, but they haven't done well enough. And as a city councilperson, I would feel that incumbent upon me to make sure that my constituents know if there's something coming, if there's a project being uh, considered on Hemphill or on the East Lancaster or wherever. The people that live in those communities have to know as soon as possible so they can form a response, whether it's positive or negative. They, you know, to be forewarned is to be forearmed. You have to know. And uh, many times the city doesn't want you to know because it's a project they want to happen. And even if the neighborhood doesn't want it to happen. But that would be one of my goals as a councilperson is I would be reaching out to my constituents and neighborhood leaders as soon as I knew something was coming so that they could be prepared for it.
Awesome. We're gonna, we have a hand raise uh, from Tara Wilson. We're going to ask her to unmute.
Yeah, you know, I just wanted to kind of respond a little bit to what Rick was saying. You know, I have experienced, you know, having engaged and worked with Rick and having run for District Four when Riverside was in the part of Old District Four. And you know, like I said, you know, Rick cares deeply about Carter Riverside. They've done a lot of great things over there. And we know when we visit there that there's a lot of very um, really cool events that happen over there. Ray Street's great, you know, we love the post, right? Neutral coffee, you know, neutral uh, uh, coffee, um, Ray Street Coffee, all that stuff. But the problem that I saw when I, when I was campaigning at Riverside is whenever I'd come to the CRNA meeting or whatever, Riverside, Carter Riverside, Bonnie Bray, that area has a lot of diversity. There are a lot of brown Hispanic people that live there, but those aren't the people that I ever saw in these meetings when I went to go speak over there. Um, very older retirees, white, you know, pale. And I actually had an experience at, at one of the, the last forums we did in the District Four race, where I had a, a, a younger Hispanic woman come up to me. It was her and her husband. And she said, you know, Tara, like, I appreciate everything that you said, but you didn't speak about anything um, in regards to Hispanics, you know, and I, you're Latina, like, why didn't you talk about that more? And I was like, well, and I said, you know, turn around, I said, look at the room. And she turned around and said, yeah, I was like, are there, we, we're the only two brown people in this room. And I said, maybe one more. I was like, honestly, I was like, you know, I have to speak to my audience and I don't really feel that this audience cares about that issue. Not, not that it's not important to them, but I don't think it's one of the more important issues. And so my concern is that, you know, again, you know, Rick's a great guy and he's done some great stuff in Riverside, but I haven't seen him be able to gain the trust of the communities of color in that area. And I also think I find it concerning that, you know, in this district that's 80% color, that he's not able to see that, you know, it's going to be hard for him to gain trust from all these communities that have been impacted by racial issues in Fort Worth and the history that we have here, especially in Riverside. Um, I mean, you even have problems with the alumni from Carter Riverside having separate uh, reunions. You have a, a white reunion, you have a black reunion down to this day. I mean, that's a pretty alarming, jarring issue. Um, and I just feel like, you know, I get that, you know, Rick is reaching out for leadership, but I do also think that you're not really gaining or understanding the impact that marginalized brown and black communities on the east side inside the loop have had to deal with. And so, you know, I think that we really need someone more dynamic that understands the lived experience of the majority of this district and even those in Riverside that don't get to come out and really be fully advocated for, um, you know, in that area.
I just want to say that, you know, uh, I understand what Tara's viewpoint is on that and some of it is well founded. But I can only speak from my experience and I've lived and grown up here in a neighborhood that is Hispanic, black and white. It's a tri-ethnic uh, community. But uh, as far as the part of understanding or reaching out to the Hispanic community in my area, I can only respond by saying that they're all supporting me. The, you know, Hispanic leadership and residents in this area. So they must, you know, they must see something of value there. And that's, that's what I would have to say to that.
Well, we're going to go ahead and move to a question for Jeanette. Jeanette, you spent time with working for Commissioner Roy Brooks and have several endorsements from local political leaders. What do they see in you and what has that experience prepared you for candidate, uh, to be a candidate for District 11?
Okay, um, so as in my role as executive administrator of Administrative and Constituent Services, it's kind of a long title. So Administrative Chief of Staff type role and then Constituent Services, working with uh, those in the community who are in need of, 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 of an array of services. The majority of folks uh, reach out on behalf of social services. So I work every day to help um, our constituents, um, not only in precinct one. And, and precinct one overlaps a lot of this District 11. But you know, anybody that reaches out to our office, um, people reach out to us about local issues, state issues, federal issues. And, and we, if, if we can't solve the problem, we know who can and we connect people. So every day I'm connecting folks to uh, services and resources that are out there. For example, somebody can call for mortgage assistance. So we have two uh, two agencies that we uh, refer to. The majority of the times that can help, uh, Tarrant County Human Services and Fort Worth Community Action Partners. And although they might, it, let's say they might be able to help, but a lot of the times they can't. But they can help with other types of services like utility assistance. And that will offset, um, that will help with that. And that will offset the, that money so that it can go towards mortgage assistance. So just taking care of uh, everyday issues. And it's just not, it's not just the working class. It's people facing homelessness. It's people who um, need help paying their property taxes, getting them on a payment plan. Just uh, people at all socioeconomic uh, levels. So you could say that I've been working in the community. I work in the community outside of work. A lot of the stuff that I do is not work related. My volunteer uh, services, stuff that I do because I feel passionate about. And so people will say that I can get the job done, that I can um, relate to and communicate to a broader group of people.
Ricardo, can you talk about your work at Hemphill Nocevende and how it has prepared you to represent District 11?
Most definitely, sir. Yes, sir. And actually, you know, uh, I'm thankful for my parents um, who helped, you know, mold me into the leader I am today, you know, as being a, from a migrant family, you know. My parents can't teach me how to read or write in English. Uh, my mom only has a third grade education. My dad only went to middle school, so they really can't teach me too much of math either. So I understand the uphill battles and the working class experiences that we have and I, I can relate to everyone. You know, seeing my mom work for herself as a, you know, cleaning houses for wealthy people. I learned how to become an entrepreneur at a very young age. Uh, my brother is also a barber. He started, he started cutting hair at 14 and he owns a successful barber shop right here on Hemphill. You know, so I, I understand the experiences is because I understand the experiences uh, of the working class community because I live on the same street with my community. People respect me for that and because I am standing up for a great cause. Because like Ms. Tara stated, the people who are living in our communities, they don't always necessarily have time to make it to the neighborhood association meetings uh, because they are at odd hours and people are still at work. And um, you know, trying to get home to make dinner for, for their childrens or even get to sports activities. So they are inconvenient times and generally it's people who are, you know, older, um, white, majority uh, and, and retired folks, you know, who unfortunately don't, not necessarily always have the enough energy to get out and to really reach out to the community members who are going to be affected by their decisions, which are going to be long term. So, you know, when we take that into consideration, of course, my military service, I was able to over throughout the, my, my life gain uh, leadership, communication, organizational and structural skills that I'm able to utilize and in any uh, arena that I'm in. And so uh, you know, when we talk about getting to know people and, and providing services, I work for Texas Tarrant County College now, uh, providing veteran services. You know, I, I used to work for TCU doing the same. So uh, I'm very well connected uh, because of it, you know, people in the community know me uh, and, and know my face and my name. You know, because of that work and, you know, I, I want to ensure that the work that I've been doing here is going to spread to the rest of the district because it's not just about Southside anymore. It's going to be taking that initiative and be proactive for the whole district. And that's my, that's my, uh, that's what I'm going to do for the district is I'm going to bring all the knowledge and resources that I have and, and, and inform our community uh, of the information that they need to hold, know, to make adequate life-changing decisions for the future.
Tara, you are a medical professional. You spent uh, obviously a lot of time on the front lines of the COVID pandemic. How has that experience prepared you as a leader and as a city council candidate for District 11?
Yeah, um, yes, definitely. COVID was a whole experience. I ran for office even in the, in the middle of the pandemic. But you know, I, you know, I'm in charge of, you know, a unit of, of medical professionals for multiple disciplinary teams as people are coming in with various whatever, think about any ER element you can have. But you know, I, I meet people in like their worst time, you know, at a time where they're like, you know, it, it, it might not actually be an emergency per se, but to them it's an emergency, right? And it's not about us telling them whether they should be there or not. It's about uh, people coming to us with their problems and us finding solutions and then getting them on their way. And that's literally what my whole entire job is about. So like if I meet someone at bedside and they can't afford their $4 uh, medication from Walmart, like how do we get them connected to them for, I can't give them $4 out of my pocket. The system won't let me. But what I'm saying is we, I encounter all of these people, our houses, community that come to the ER or that call a fire EMS to them just to get a meal and a warm blanket. Those are the types of things that we encounter. Those touch the issues of affordable housing, uh, getting paid, not being able to have a payable living wage job, right? Those are the things that are barriers that's people to have, to be able to get into a home to combat our um, unhoused situation in Fort Worth. You know, bringing actual jobs to the east side because we have a workforce that's ready to work. We have training resources, you know, from union and skills that don't even necessarily need to involve college where they can get great, high living wage earning, earning jobs. If we could only bring jobs over here that don't pollute our neighborhoods. You know, we have all this stuff coming to Alliance and Hillside and it's cool. Like, yeah, it's a great story, but you know, we still pick the communities of color to put the industry that pollutes us and that hurts, that hurts, you know, creates a hazardous environmental impact on our city. And, and this is a conversation that, that no one's really in leadership that's really willing to have right now. But we have communities that echo heights. And again, almost always environmentally impactful destructive industry are put in communities of color all across the country. It's, it's a historic part of Fort Worth's history too. And so, you know, being on the front lines and also being a lateral colleague to fire into police. There is a language that we speak that I understand. We encounter a lot of the same people in our disciplines. If you talk to our firefighters, they'll tell us that they cannot get out to these far out developments in enough time to actually fight the house fire. When they get a certain call to certain west and final areas of Fort Worth, they know that house is burning down because they can't get there in time, you know? And I think uh, Councilwoman Mayor Pro Tem Gina Vivis actually recently talked about maybe putting a moratorium on our growth. And I can't, I don't, I can't say that I disagree with her. We are short 150 firefighters in Fort Worth. The city manager's office, even after the city gate study, you know, is not willing to give them the resources they need. Their paychecks are a mess, they can't read their pay slips. They've been having to deal with this fight with city hall for four years. It's not a new problem. We can't retain well qualified uh, staff people in our code compliance department and higher level leadership roles in the city because the city manager doesn't want to work with them or give them autonomy that they really need to fully do their job to serve the city of Fort Worth. Again, the city, we do a lot of great things in making Fort Worth look shiny and stuff, but on underneath the surface, our infrastructure is crumbling and we're not going to be able to sustain this for too much longer. We have to really get back to the brass tacks and the nuts and bolts of figuring out, how do we fund our frontline responders? What do we do with MedStar? They have a program where they want to try to reduce the amount of times people call it uh, an ambulance to help them go get a prescription or they can't even make a primary care doctor visit. So they go incur a $5,000 ER bill for something that could have been done in a 20 minute, uh, you know, uh, doctor visit. There, we're trying to figure out these real issues that affect all these other things that are going on in Fort Worth. And I know that I understand from a frontline and a lived perspective, the under, to work with them to solve these problems.
Christopher, uh, as an entrepreneur, um, public transportation and transportation in our districts is obviously something that is lacking for a working class area that uh, you know, people would love the alternative of being able to use a more consistent bus system. What vision do you have for public transit in the area? And how does it affect um, your businesses and people uh, being able to get to jobs and support this community?
That's a great question. I'm not an expert on the public transportation. So rather than come up with this whole new story, I, I can't comment on that. It's something if I am elected that I would be able to research and get the right people that are paid to do that and come up with viable solutions. I will tell you, um, I own a car, but it does saddens me when I'm passing uh, on the I will tell you, um, I own a car, but it does saddens me when I'm passing uh, on the streets and people have mentioned uh, about the city of Fort Worth. They love, like Tara says, they love saying how wonderful it is, but it's kind of too Fort Worth. It's the haves and the have-nots. We should have uh, on the city bus line, I've noticed people that are handicapped or in wheelchairs. Uh, they are forced to stand out in the elements. So if it's freezing, you should have a uh, overhead where people can sit comfortable while they are waiting on the bus. It saddens me again to know there's only times, many times you only identify a bus stop when you see that metal sign. I'm thinking that person is standing up. Again, we need all bus stops, no matter where they're located. Uh, even though I've noticed a lot of nice bus stops in Fort Worth. And when you go to downtown Fort Worth, they're beautiful enclosed. But in District 11, it's just a stop sign. So if I was elected, that would be uh, one of the things that I would put on my list to make sure that all uh, city bus stops have enclosed um, uh, infrastructure. So if it's freezing outside, at least they can be uh, comfortable and have solar panels and have Wi-Fi. So while you're waiting uh, on the bus, you're still comfortable and you're able to do your business uh, in case you're um, you don't have a Wi-Fi connection. So that's my take on that.
We have Tara Wilson, who said she would like to comment on transit?
Oh, yes. Yeah. So huh, man, this is an issue that has been ongoing for years now, you know? What we can say about the east side of this district is that they do use the bus system, right? Some people like say, oh, I always see the bus is empty, but the east side of Fort Worth uses the bus system. E- especially, you know, that Woodhaven connector area is like, I I have a bus stop literally across the street from my front yard. And I see my old elderly neighbors, I have, he has a lunch bag. He comes out, he stands up against the pole and waits for the bus. Um, turn, um, you know, we have zip zones in Fort Worth, but but they don't service the actual communities that would really greatly benefit from the zip zone. Yes, there's one that comes over to 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 Texas Wesleyan and does come down to southeast. But here recently, uh, you know, Rosemont came home to door hangers for for the zip zone and the zip zone doesn't come south of Berry. Right? We have a whole, a whole neighborhoods that could be uh, positively be impacted by, you know, our quote unquote transit plan, but they don't even reach the communities that it needs to service. This is a long-term investment that Fort Worth doesn't, should do, that we need to do. If we're really trying to bring all of these jobs to Alliance, why aren't we more focused on getting our workers from the south and the east side up there to get to those jobs? When I was running in District 4 and I was talking to some of the businesses from far up north in that district area, but Golden Triangle and Heritage Parkway, they said that they would give their uh, their workers who were coming from the south and east side of Fort Worth, literal gas cards to make sure that they could get to work, that they would give them these uh, windows of these kind of time windows that where they could be late because they know they'd be stuck in traffic trying to get to work in the morning. And that over, this over uh, too many cars on the road again affects our our first responders, police and fire who've been able to get to critical calls in parts of our area because there's just too much traffic and too many cars on on the streets, you know, at very high peak times of the city. So again, the city of Fort Worth has been very negligent in understanding that we have to invest long-term and understanding that we won't see our balance sheet right away get balanced out for almost, this is a 10 to 20-year project. If we really care about this and really do this smartly and intentionally. But it, this is not a matter of whether we should do it. It's a matter of that we have to if we're going to sustain all the things that we really say and claim to care about.
Awesome. We now have Rick.
Yeah, I'm not going to uh, take our time to repeat everything that Tara said because I agree wholeheartedly with all of our comments and we're aligned on that issue. Public transportation, for the 13th largest city in the United States, public transportation has to be a primary objective. Uh, the Lancaster corridor is the most heavily used uh, public transit corridor in the city. So it's obviously a necessity there. Um, in some other areas of the city where public transportation is not as in demand, we need to do something different. Uh, Tara did mention the zip zones, those work in some areas. We don't need to have these huge empty buses in some areas of the city where they're not needed or wanted. And that's, you know, that's a complaint I hear a lot. These buses are empty. And that's not the case in uh, the Lancaster corridor, obviously, and in some of those other areas. But uh, I have high hopes for Trinity Metro with their new leader that's come from the northeast and may bring some innovative ideas and solutions. I am in favor of some type of rail system. But a few years ago, 10, 12, 15 years ago, when Fort Worth proposed a light rail, I was adamantly against it because it was going to connect downtown to the cultural district, to the stockyards. That's for tourists. That's not for workers. Um, and I would not support a plan like that, but I would definitely support uh, the extension of Tech Trail, which is already in the works, getting to the hospital district because that's a major employment center. And also some type of good and reliable public transportation to those uh, employment centers such as Alliance, like Tara mentioned. But we have to be creative and adaptive in the way that we do our public transportation. One size does not fit all.
We now have Jeanette.
I just wanted to say that that I, I am a huge supporter of public transportation as somebody who had to use public transportation back in the day when I worked at Hot Dog on a Stick. Uh, my car broke down and I would have to take the bus to work uh, every day. Uh, I didn't have money to fix the transmission in my car. So I mean, yeah, I had to stand out in the elements and I would love to see that all bus stops have covered um, covered shelters uh, for those folks to be out of in the elements. And and if I ever travel, I always research public transportation because, you know, I want to save money. Um, and sometimes it's the fastest route, right? Um, so I would really push for uh, rail here in in Fort Worth, connecting our south, north, east and west. Um, just for workers and and for folks that just want to get around the city at a lower cost. Uh, just the big advocate and supporter of public transportation. That's, that's it.
All right. Thanks, everyone. We are going to move to closing remarks and we'll start with Ricardo. Is there anything you want to share about why you think you are the best candidate for District 11, anything you want to close with?
Yes, sir. Most definitely. Thank you. I wasn't asked the transportation, the transportation question, so I would like to use that as part of my closing remarks. Uh, as the, as a candidate, we're going to need someone who understands a comprehensive economic plan, someone who understands the future land use plan, uh, someone who understands the strategy, uh, uh, the city's strategy. And obviously we don't need any vague answers. We don't need any uh, answers that don't make any sense. That is very hip pocket test of that everybody's answering the same thing. What we need to do is understand what's really coming to the city of Fort Worth, all right? Uh, why isn't there any transportation outside of Fort Worth or outside of the loop? It's because they're trying to push us out, right? It makes juice. It's the, it's the big developer now. So they're pushing our working house communities outside the loop where we don't need those things and they're trying to use transportation as the connector to other gentrified areas, other rezoned areas. So as a closing remark, we need a leader or left, no, 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 not a leader. We need a representative of the community who understands all of the things that uh, the general public doesn't necessarily understand. And that's to say that I understand it all, but by no means I don't know anything at all. Uh, I'm just a blessed to be able to uh, have uh, a, a ability to read and comprehend um, things that the city uh, or that documents, contracts may um, sound easy and but are really just complex and uh, need a more insightful look into it. Uh, and I can bring that with my analytical uh, experience uh, process and 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 uh, you know, viewing and uh, interpreting federal and state policies and procedures uh, with my experience, I'm willing to bring that. I'm going to bring that to the city of Fort Worth. I understand that being a candidate is a full-time job, not a part-time job. And I will make sure that I, I am fully committed to the people and candidates, excuse me, people and residents and constituents of District 11.
Next, Christopher, what would you like to close with?
As an advocate, being there for the people, uh, I'm, I've been told by many, many people, I'm a great listener. You can be uh, elected to a position and sometimes once people elected, they no longer become accessible to the people. I will continue, if elected, to be accessible, to give them a tour of city halls, to sit down, treat them with the respect that they're due as a taxpayer. So mine is being a good listener and also we need working on the policing uh, in our area. Being a black and brown person, I can relate and I know the issues. I've worked with our NPOs and our commanders and we need so much more work done to find out to the citizens if the police are helping them or hindering them and to get them soli- solutions. And also to get funding for our mental health. There is a great need for mental health. A lot of people are arrested when they need mental health. Uh, and jail is not a solution for everybody. But if someone has a mental health breakdown, they need the mental help. So I will be there for the people to bring this city and to represent District 11 uh, and make it a proud district that we are all proud to call home.
Perfect. Tara, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, I just want to say, you know, that we, we, we can really go somewhere great in Fort Worth if we actually bring up and pull up all of our communities. And for District 11, this is a very unique opportunity for them to have someone in this leadership role as a representative of their neighborhoods that can actually get them started off on the right foot. But on in the care of the wrong hands, we'll see the same old stuff going on, the same old tired things that happen in Fort Worth. For me and my lived perspective, my healthcare experience, my frontline experience, that is a perspective that no one else in this race and no other candidate in this whole entire city has. It's a perspective that's not been had on city council ever. Not only that, I'm not the only Latina in this race, but we've never had a Hispanic woman on city council. So now we're talking about a Hispanic matriarch woman, first generation college student with the lived experience in the frontline of our healthcare disparity system in a, a community of color that faces all the barriers and the impact of the disparities. Boots on the ground for the last five years, community advocate, working on behalf of commu- of bail reform, working on behalf of black communities, working on getting with the police monitors office and trying to build good community relationships between, between police and our black and brown communities, which obviously has fallen on deaf ears based on the decisions that have been made at City Hall lately. But my point is that when Chris just brought up mental health, I was a part of acute crisis team for three years down in McLennan County. We had a group of nurses, social workers, Waco PD and McLennan County sheriffs that knew how to respond to people in mental health crisis. And the three years I was a part of that system, we never had one bad outcome or use of force incident because everyone clearly understood their roles. I have that experience to bring these types of solutions to some of these problems that have become so polarizing, right? We can talk about this all day long, but unless we have people in that position that can actually put the plans in place and have the experience to carry out, they'll just keep being conversations. So what I'm saying is for the last five years, I've dived in and hands-on, even with Ricardo, when he started Hempel No Se Vende, I was there helping him. Right? Uh, United Fort Worth, helping us to get community voice out there. All of these things, I actually have the experience and the knowledge to bring to this issue that we've never had in the history of the city. And that's why I'm the best candidate for this race. Thank you.
Jeanette, uh, give us your closing remarks.
Okay, so I I am going to be using my institutional knowledge, uh, my skills, my education, my experience. Um, just my perspective as a woman, as as a wife, as a working mom and uh, giving that all back to my community, um, everything that, you know, I've, I've, I've experienced and through work. Um, like I said before, to make this district flourish, I will be sticking to the basics, uh, working to reduce our property taxes, uh, creating safer neighborhoods. I, I've noticed a, an increase in crime in my neighborhood, at least that last night I couldn't sleep there. Somebody shot off uh, like nine um, gunshots here close to the park. Um, and you know, it's just stuff like that, you know, I I'm sleepy. Um, and and that's very regular and and it's not normal. Um, and and I'm scared, right? I'm scared for my family. It's not unrealistic that a bullet can come through the window and and you know, hit somebody. So um, working with our uh, neighborhood police officers to establish better relationships in these neighborhoods or by creating some sort of citizens patrol, um, to create these safer neighborhoods. Um, but also sticking to the basics, our streets and infrastructure. I want to be able to drive on a right, nice road um, without trying to avoid all the potholes or I want our lights to be on at night so I can feel safer. Um, and those are my top three priorities and I humbly ask for your vote on May 6th, hopefully early voting, April 24th. And April 24th, by the way, just um, a personal plug is my birthday, so I will be celebrating my 40th birthday on that day.
Awesome. Uh, Rick, close us out.
Okay, I'll do that. Um, as I said earlier, you know, I'm a neighborhood guy. I'm not a politician. I don't have ties to politicians. Obviously I've worked with my city council folks for years, for 30-plus years. But I am a neighborhood person and my passion for District 11 is strengthening our neighborhoods because those are the building blocks, not only of the district, but of the city. And I'll do everything I can to strengthen and protect our neighborhoods. We have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to forge this new District 11 and that's going to be through our neighborhoods. Uh, they didn't give us anything in District 11 as far as institutions. They carved out all of the major institutions and kept them for themselves. And I'm speaking of the city council during the redistricting process. So what we have are neighborhoods, neighborhoods that have been traditionally overlooked and marginalized and we've got to work on strengthening those and building those up. I've been doing that for 30-plus years. I know how to do it. I want to apply those same skills and successes I've had in my own community to the rest of District 11. My background in uh, neighborhood activism, serving on the zoning commission, the plan commission, the senior preservation commission, uh, mixed-use zoning advisory group, public art projects. Got a long list of community service that I can fall back on and I have the experience to get things done and know how City Hall works. I'm not a City Hall insider, but I know who to go to and I know who the players are and I know who's going to help us and I know who's not going to help us. And I'm going to get to those people that are going to help us. And that's why I feel strongly that I'm the most qualified candidate to lead this district and to forge District 11 into a new district and keeping us unified and making it a district that we can be proud of.
Awesome. Well, thank you, everyone, for joining the first ever uh, District 11 uh, panel here on the 817 Podcast. I know you guys got ton more of these coming up for yourself, so we wish you luck. I know several of you asked to pitch your links and shout out your campaign um, on the podcast. We're going to put all of that into the descriptions, each candidate's website, each candidate's tags. Uh, go support, go get involved with their uh, with their uh, campaigns. Um, for you guys who don't know, we do 500 to a thousand listeners uh, every week. So if you look at that, that's, you know, if 50,000 people vote, there's, you know, 2% of the people out there for you. So I know if they listen to this podcast, they're also action takers. So uh, go take action on who you believe is the right candidate for you. And again, thank you candidates for being a part of the 817 Podcast. We'd love to have you back in the future and we hope nothing but the best. Thanks so much.